I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. First thing on agenda is roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
And Councilmember Payne Donovan asks to be excused.
Move to excuse Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Second.
So is it moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? He's been excused. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilmembers, and wanted to share with the community the summer schedule, summer event schedule, real quick. First, the 3rd of July celebration is, of course, July 3rd, starts at 6:00 PM at Lake Ballinger Park. Second, we have a summer youth environmental education event that is focused on stormwater that Laura Reed, our stormwater program manager, will be putting on here at 10:00 AM on July 8th. And the Tour de Terrace will take place this year, July 21st through the 23rd, at the Evergreen Playfield Complex. National Night Out is the first Tuesday in August every year, and this year it happens to fall on August 1st, and we have quite a few sponsors already signed, or vendors, signed up for that event already, so that's great news. And then we have Movies in the Park, that is a new program that we're starting this year, and it is scheduled at the moment for July 13th and then August 24th. We are looking at alternative dates for the July 13th date because that is a council meeting night, so we want to make sure council could attend if they would, if they'd like to, and we can find a hole in the schedule that doesn't conflict with other community events in our surrounding partners' communities. That'll be at Terrace Creek Park, otherwise known as Candy Cane Park. So, wanted to mention those events. Let's see here. Council asked at one of our previous meetings if community transit would come and present, and how that's going to work with the Sound Transit project. They are scheduled to join us on June 5th, so they'll give a presentation to you that evening. And last thing I wanted to mention was our retreat on Saturday. So we'll be together Saturday from 9:00 through the mid-afternoon, and talking about strategic goals, performance measures, all the fun stuff that keeps everybody engaged. So with that, that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
You have any, Councilmember Sonmore?
When Sound Transit comes, can they ask to speak upon how they're cutting bus services and how well it fits our area?
Absolutely. I'll make a note.
Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. We have time, so I'm not too worried about it, but last year we were not necessarily singled out, for lack of a better way of putting it. We had a stage in the past. Just wanted to know whether or not that'll be the same this year, no need to introduce to council so we can just be, as opposed to like, show up at this spot at this minute.
For...
Any of them, so National Night Out, 3rd of July.
Yep.
And I don't think we've ever done anything but Tour de Terrace, so probably not Tour de Terrace, but...
I don't think so. I think council should just come and enjoy themselves or the community. If you want to be introduced, we can do that.
I'm sorry, I was looking at my calendar. What?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Is the meeting place, did you say, for Tour de Terrace? Because we're just...
Yeah, no, not, no, I don't think...
Can you guys speak into your microphones, please?
Yeah, so, yeah, sidebar. Yeah, so, for July 3rd and National Night Out, there have been times where the council has, I would just say singled out, "Hi!" And I'm not suggesting we do that. I kind of liked the last couple of years where we haven't done that, but if we have to, we have to, so I was just trying to figure that out.
Yeah, I think it's up to individual councilmembers. If you'd like to, we can certainly do that. If you don't and want to enjoy the time with your families, we can do that, too.
Yeah, we've always been introduced. Councilmember Sonmore?
Go ahead.
Okay. But, and, well, we also need to be there at a certain time that probably Jennifer will pick a time.
Yeah, we will coordinate that for you.
So that, okay. Mayor Protem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, couple of potential conflicts with meetings, our council meetings. So, first of all, July 3rd, we have a council meeting scheduled for that evening, so we probably need to think about how we're going to handle that, or probably want to cancel that meeting. But then also on June 20th is the start of the AWC Conference, and we have a council meeting scheduled for that night as well. Those will be two regular meetings in a row, however, so I'm not sure how we want to necessarily, I'm not sure we want to cancel two consecutive meetings, but we do need to figure out how
Mayor Protem and councilmembers. We're here tonight to provide you with an update on the Transit Connection Corridor
we're going to handle that conflict.
So, yes, agreed.
Project.
We saw that on the calendar upcoming, especially with the June 19th, or, excuse me, Juneteenth
This project has been under development for several years, with the goal of improving
holiday on the 19th, and then the council meeting scheduled on the 20th.
pedestrian connectivity between our redeveloping town center, adjacent neighborhoods, and
We were going to discuss that at the executive leadership team next week, and make those
the transit center. There are essentially three pieces, three sites with this project.
recommendations to council on how to proceed, and maybe move those meetings around so we give adequate notice to the public.
Right. Thank you.
The first one we are showing you on the screen here is the Trails Through Veterans Memorial
Usually we move it to a Tuesday, but I know that every once in a while, in the old days, we did move it to a Wednesday.
Park, the first piece of the project, where we are converting soil pathways and converting
Yep.
So whatever, whatever works. Anyone else? I don't see Councilmember Murray's hand up.
them to paved, lighted pathways with various amenities.
Okay. All right.
And a part of the design, we have some retaining walls, a new pedestrian bridge crossing, which
I guess that's it, then. Thank you. Next is the update on the design of Transit Connection Corridor Project.
will be a little bit wider and skewed angle compared to the current existing bridge. Again, we are converting most of them to paved pathways to allow for accessibility. There are three connection points leading down to the transit center, the first being off of 60th Avenue West, the second being from the Civic Campus there at B&amp;C, and then the third being off of 58th. Obviously, this is a very dense wooded area. There were over a hun, or over a thousand trees that were marked for survey, that were four-inch diameter or larger. Anytime you're increasing the width of trails and, you know, developing the area, obviously you're going to have impacts. And to maintain our slopes that we need for ADA and accessibility purposes, the alignments that we chose, there are going to be some tree removal due to that development, but we've done our best to minimize that as much as possible while still achieving our other goals. We've incorporated some frontage improvements along 58th, where we've adjusted the exit point or entryway to the trail to better align with the crosswalk in that location at the intersection. We will be updating four ramps, providing an overlay of the area of the street, as well as updating sidewalk and planter strip. So currently, we are at 60% design. Our intended schedule right now is to complete environmental and final design by the fall of this year, with the intention of being bid ready by the start of next year. For this specific piece, there are multiple funding sources that can be applied. We have Sound Transit funding. We did unfortunately not receive a extension request through our PSRC CMAC funds, so unfortunately there's a little bit of a deficit there, but we do have the opportunity to review where we're at financially, and potentially go after transportation alternative program funding through PSRC as well, and that is coming up. The call for that should be coming out in June, so we'll be reviewing that, as well as our finances for this project, and looking at potential application for bicycle and pedestrian funding through that program.
We have a question. Go ahead.
Just before we get any farther, I want to make sure there's no miscommunication. The whole way through this project, I've always asked how many trees that we are going to lose, and you just said possibly a thousand?
No, there were a thousand trees within the park that were surveyed, so existing a thousand. I don't know the number, the exact number off the top of my head. I want to say maybe around 30 total, but...
That's where we were at. Because I was getting nervous. You've got the Ivy League taking Ivy off the trees, and I'm thinking...
No, sorry if that was not clear. There were a thousand trees, over a thousand trees surveyed on the site with likely around, I believe it's 30, but I can confirm that number if needed.
Right, and there will be restoration also for those trees that are removed. We have to plant a 10-to-1 ratio because it's a critical area, so, or 300 trees could be planted because of that as well.
300 trees, and 30 would be taken down.
Well, 30 would be removed, but then there'll be 10 times that amount that need to be planted. So whatever that number is, a 10-to-1 ratio will be applied to it.
To mitigate the impacts.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do you want to switch to the amenity survey? So in fa, oh, go, go ahead.
Go ahead.
It sounded like you were going to switch views. I didn't get a chance to see the other ones. So if we could go back up to 60th Avenue, where I see an "A" there, and as the trail goes, it goes back towards the police department, so I know that one, goes to the left, but the parking right, of course, is to the right, and it's only kind of lit there. I'm not sure what that means, that little "Y" where the "A" is. I don't know if that's helpful.
So there's...
Your mouse is on it right now.
There's the double, the double bold lines going just below the "A," and that is the existing alignment.
Correct. That's what I was...
If that was your question, and then we will be, the shaded area is the proposed.
New trail?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, I think I'm going to have two questions that aren't related. So the first one is where we just were, which is just, it never dawned on me, but with us doing all this renovation in the park, does our liability change at all? And where I'm going with this is that the shortest route to the bus from 60th is almost a straight drop-down, and I have a hard time believing folks won't keep using that, and now we're encouraging you to use it, which is, before, I always felt like, well, that was on you. It's not really a park. It's a ravine, but if we're turning it in, in essence, to a usable park, are we, should we be concerned about that? I guess is where I'm going with that, because that is a pretty, 53-year-old, that's a pretty steep hill. It wasn't a decade ago, but it is now. So, you know, being, you know, just like, wait a minute, are we opening ourselves up to anything we need to beware? Maybe it's just a sign that says, you're taking your own chances going down that path or something, I don't know. Just kind of recognizing that if we're encouraging people in the park, that's, I just realized, potentially a, uh-oh, but I don't know what to do about that.
Are you talking about the dirt path that goes along the fence line, then?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, we can't keep people on the pathways, but we can encourage use by, you know, developing and making an easier transition down to, you know, it's a little bit length, longer than the straight shot, but I don't know, you know, there, yeah, I don't know that we'll ever be able to prevent people from wandering off the pathway.
Yeah, fair enough. But right now, it's not even wandering off. You're encouraged to go that way. It's carved out.
Oh.
Say the scouts come out and clear the path from time to time.
So that, that trail isn't maintained. It's not, it's more or less a goat path.
Yeah.
So it's not, we have not improved it.
Okay.
So it's been created by people that walk through that area, but it is used, right? And I agree with you, it is steep in locations, certain areas, but it is part of the master plan to improve that eventually, it's just not part of these funding sources.
Okay.
And it would be, not a paved pathway, but it'll probably be like a wood chip.
Sure.
Improved pathway. But it is, it's very steep in locations, so...
And again, mine, mine's more about the old man reliability side of that one. I'm just like, we're encouraging people in, and then we know that that's a drop.
There will be signage, too, at each entry point that we'll get to.
Okay.
And so that'll tell you, it'll have a map of the trails, and tell you how to get to where you need to go.
Okay.
And so that won't be one of the ones that's highlighted. It'll be the paved pathways that we're talking about.
Perfect. Okay, and I am guilty of using the trails. That's what I'm like, I know what's going to happen, and it's not safe. All right, second follow-up, if I may?
Go ahead.
Perfect. Not a follow-up, completely different direction. As we stay in that same region of 60th, and we pass 230 Third Place, and I can't remember what the last one is, it's at the Hook there, but that whole parcel, as my understanding, is prime real estate. So maybe it's not a question for you all, it may remind us, that we should be thinking about, what can we do to make sure that we don't lose, whatever you want to call that, I mean, it's, to me, a natural environment, and I don't know that we can do anything right now, but just kind of putting that out there, that we should be thinking about design standards so you don't put a bunch of dumpsters there, a different way to say that, and then, look, this way, not that way. But, just kind of putting that out here for us to be thinking about, so...
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Woodard. That is a concern that I have as well, as far as the interface between the park and development.
Right.
And so I just absolutely want to put that back on the table. I know that's something we need to work with our planning department on, but I'd love to see us, the parks and planning, put our heads together and come up with a plan for what do we want to see as far as development, and when development occurs around the park, how is that going to interact with the park? And, for instance, I mean, I'd love to see, you know, development with restaurant terraces looking into the park, and take other things to take advantage of, and appreciate this great amenity we have. So, thank you.
There are some guiding principles that we put into the master plan, if you remember. So there are, it's very general, but there are some pieces to that that do reference those things, because I agree, when you look, when you start to walk down that path and you look up, it's already a kind of imposing wall right there, right? There's a retaining wall, so if you see dumpsters there, that would be very unappealing, so, you know, happy to work with CED, the Community Economic Development Department, and try to move something forward.
Any other questions before we move on to a different topic?
No.
Okay.
Guess not.
So in February, can we switch, yeah, thank you. In February and March, we actually put out a survey to the public after our public information session, just surveying the public about different amenities that we would be liking, or we would like to install as a part of this project. So, sorry, let me get my notes. So there were over, or around 100 responses, actually, that we got over about a four-week period. The first item that we surveyed was the lighting poles that would be installed for illumination along the trailways. There were two options. We had an Alaskan yellow cedar wood pole and a metal powder-coated black pole. There were almost 50/50 response, and we ended up taking this to RPAC as well to get their final, final decision on it, and what was selected was the metal pole. Less likely, you know, to be vandalized, durable, and a clean look were the general comments with that. The second item that we had available for public input was benches. Likely, probably, two to three benches to be installed throughout the park, either at entryways or within. We had multiple options. The top two were the live-edge wood bench and the wood bench with the metal rail. General comments for the live-edge wood bench that we received were, looks like Pacific Northwest, comfortable and natural, practical with the back, looks like it will last. The RPAC also agreed with the live-edge wood bench to be installed. The third item was railings. Now, railings are not going to be installed at all areas of the park. There are specific areas where retaining walls and steep slopes require a railing per the drop-off. So, we had a couple options, and Corton Steel railing was selected with the durability and less maintenance, and looks rustic but intentional. Some of the other options we had were the wood railings with the welded wire mesh, as well as wood rubber rail with the chain link.
But you could see the voting was really close for that, too.
Yeah, it was.
I mean, 39 to 38, so...
Thank you. The next option or item was wayfinding signs. We had several options. The top two were the post with the complete trail map, is the upper-left one there, at 62%, and the second was a laser-cut post on the right at 24%. These would likely be at your trailhead locations, so at 58th, 60th, and the Civic Campus, there is the possibility of also having one at like, a junction point mid-park as well. And we have the interpretive signage. There were several, again, several options to look at. We had a 42% for the angled railing-mounted sign panel on the upper-left, and a 38% for the integrated rail sign on the panel. Other options were an angled metal panel sign and a wood post sign. General comments were easy to read, for the one that was selected, were easy to read because of the angle, small and simple, durable and easy to replace if needed. And the last item that we have yet to receive input on is trash receptacles. So we have two option here, two options here that we'll be looking for a selection to be installed at various locations, likely the exit points. We're going to try and encourage pack it in, pack it out, so, more to come there. And then, can we, yeah. So that, so that sums up the amenities options that we have that will be incorporated at various locations throughout the Veterans Memorial Trails.
Can I ask a question before we go on to the next set of slides?
Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we go back to the fencing? I just, I guess I had a quick question about the fencing, as somebody who has had young kids and gone to parks with young kids, and it was a little hard to tell, but I guess the Corton Steel, I guess, like, do we have concerns about, like, so, like, kids sticking their arms or legs, or those sorts of things through there, and maybe getting stuck? I guess would be my question. I don't know what that gap looks like from this angle.
I mean, my assumption would be that it, that those railings are taken into consideration, the spacing between them, to avoid...
You would think, but I know we've been at parks where that, that hasn't actually been true.
Okay.
And children have an amazing way, I know, no?
Okay.
Have an amazing way of, I feel like, getting stuck places that perhaps they shouldn't. I don't know, I guess that would be a concern for me, that I would love to make sure that we vet before, I guess, choosing and installing that one.
We can, we can look at the spindle widths and make sure...
Are fences for, public fences like this, under the same code as for railings for homes? Because I think that's four inches width, but it's for a baby's head to go through, not to go through. Arms, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a design standard that they apply to this, just as similar to that. I don't know the exact thing off the top of my head, but there is one, and we went through that a little bit at Ballinger, so that is something we discussed also, is that nobody could get stuck inside of that, between them.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you. That was my only question.
These railings are pretty limited until their installation. There's only a few spots where there would be the Corton Steel railings. It's more for the bridge and a couple of other places that we'd want to keep people from falling off a steeper kind of slope.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll move on to the pedestrian plaza. Okay.
Guess not. We can move on.
Okay. So this is the pedestrian plaza. This is located at the corner of 236 and Van Ry Boulevard, in the southwest corner. It's about 4,300 square feet in size, similar to a kind of a baseball diamond in shape. It's mostly hardscape and landscaped area with several artistic features and seating areas, an area where people are welcomed off of the new light rail station that'll be fully designed, fully, fully operational, and just a location for people to hang out as they're getting on or off transportation in the area. This was previously designed while Van Ry Boulevard and Main Street improvements, so we're kind of in the midst of providing an update. So, Sound Transit has reached final grades in that area, and so we've done some resurvey, and we're making some adjustments, but we'll be proceeding with design to, again, kind of align with a full design completion with environmental completed as well. We've been, we've had a call for artists, and we had four submittals, and we'll go through some of the options here you may be familiar with. Do you want to go through? Yeah, thank you.
Oh, sorry, you can't see, can you?
No, it's okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I'm looking at the previous slide with Hark, and where is this art?
Oh, yeah. It's, it'll be in the center tree limb seating area.
Where it says, where it says planting?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Thank you.
So these are just the four options, and the Arts Commission is actually meeting later this month to make a selection, and so they'll be bringing that final selection to you at a later date. But we can scroll through to just show you the options again. So, the plaza location involves surplus land from DOT, so we're moving forward with the appraisal process to essentially acquire the land necessary to build the plaza, so we're working through that process with DOT as well. Again, our, our goal is to be ready for bid early next year, and have this under construction next, early spring and summer. And then the third piece of the Transit Connection Corridor Project is actually a trail extension, which is a joint effort where you exit from Veterans Memorial Park, and you'll be skirting between the development to the east and the Sound Transit bus loop on the west. So essentially connecting the exit point from Veterans Memorial Park out to 236, a nice straight shot. So, joint venture for the city and Sound Transit to complete that section of the trail. But that is the Transit Connection Corridor Project. Are there any other questions?
Do we have? Okay, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm guess I'm curious what the timing of the park is in relation to the opening of the light rail station. It obviously would be nice to have a warm, welcoming entrance to Mount Lake Terrace when that station opens, and I guess I'm curious, given kind of the timeline you just outlined...
Um, but we can scroll through to just show you the options again. So, um, the plaza location involves, uh, surplus, surplus land from DOT. So we're moving forward with the appraisal process to essentially acquire the land necessary to build the plaza. Um, so we're working through that process with DOT as well. Um, again, our, our, uh, goal is to be ready for bid early next year and have this under construction next, early spring and summer. Um, and then the third piece of the Transit Connection Corridor Project is actually a trail extension, which is a joint, um, effort, um, where you exit from Veterans Memorial Park and you'll be skirting between the development to the east and the Sound Transit bus loop on the west. So essentially connecting the exit point from Veterans Memorial Park out to two thirty-sixth, a nice straight shot. So, um, joint venture for the city and Sound Transit to complete that section of the trail. But that is the Transit Connection Corridor Project. Are there any other questions?
Do we have? Okay, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I'm curious what the timing of the park is in relation to the opening of the light rail station. It obviously would be nice to have a warm welcoming entrance to Mount Lake Terrace, um, when that station opens. And I guess I'm curious, given kind of the timeline you just outlined, how, how we expect that to kind of play out.
Currently, we're, um, thinking that we're gonna go out to construction at the same time for both components of the Veterans Memorial Park trail upgrades as well as the plaza. Um, that is a discussion that we'll be having whether or not those will be combined as one bid or if there'll be separate bids. Um, but general same timeline for construction to be.
I'm sorry, what was the finishing timeline for those, for completion?
Well, we hope to be done by time light rail revenue service starts. That's the goal.
Okay, so that is the goal.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. No, that is, I think that would be a wonderful, uh, goal and it would be nice to see us be able to, to execute on that so that when we do have that wonderful opening, whenever that is, uh, you know, we're able to really showcase all of the wonderful work that we've been doing, uh, here in Mount Lake Terrace and have that great gateway to our city, uh, visible for, for all the visitors who are maybe coming for the first time on light rail. So, that's awesome. Thank you.
All right. Do I see anyone else? Okay, we can move on to the next.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next is, again, the same, the same team. Um, the review of the Amendment Two to OTAC Incorporated Agreement for Design of Sound, Design of Transit Connections Corridor Project.
So this is, uh, another piece of what we were just discussing with the Transit Connection Corridor Project. Over the design process that we've completed thus far, um, we've encountered a few, uh, minor, uh, challenges. Um, and one of those is incorporating, uh, the frontage improvements out on fifty-eighth. Uh, that wasn't currently, uh, caught in the scope, uh, of the original design, uh, contract. So we've, we've provided here, uh, tonight with an update on, uh, what was needed for aligning the trail with the crosswalk, uh, installation of a planter and sidewalk, the ramps, uh, street pedestrian lighting. And we're also proposing to extend, uh, OTAC's current contract, which expires May thirty-first of this month, to extend it out to December thirty-first of this year, um, allowing for us to complete our design and, um, environmental review and have all our bid documents, uh, prepped and ready to go next, next year. So, um, the effort to incorporate the frontage and sidewalk, uh, improvements was, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and again, we're also asking at the same time for an extension on the completion, time for completion to December thirty-first. Um, so we're here tonight to request that, uh, council, um, approves, sorry, let me just get this right. Uh, at the May fifteenth council meeting to move to approve, uh, and authorize the city manager to execute this supplement number two with the A and E Professional Services Agreement with OTAC, uh, in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, approved, subject to city attorney review and approved to as form, um, the amount not to succeed five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, eight hundred and ninety-nine, with a new completion date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, um, Councilmember Salmore?
Can you just go back and clarify? Um, when I say thirty-five thousand dollars and I know our budget, um, report's coming up here soon, you know, I have to gulp and, and know that's just for design work. So can you just go back real fast? So thirty-five thousand, what exactly are we getting for an extra thirty-five thousand dollars and where would that come from in our budget?
Sure. Um, thirty-five thousand dollars covers the environmental review updates, so, um, cultural resource review. Um, it also includes illumination, um, from the subconsultant, um, as well as ramp upgrades, um, sidewalk, planter strip, um, and these are all elements of design. So within the planter strip, you also have irrigation needs. Um, so there's utility work as well. Um, and also a, uh, an overlay involved with the frontage as well.
But we're not getting any of that. That's just design work.
It's just design work.
So there's gonna be additional to get all that stuff done?
Mm-hmm.
So where, where did it get missed at in the OTACs?
The original?
Did they just not? Yeah, did they just not put it in there? I mean, I, you're naming all this stuff off. I'm not upset with you. I'm just asking.
No, it, it just wasn't captured in the original scope of their.
But it's the environmental update, um, sidewalks, ramps, planters, illumination. And I looked up when you said illumination because I thought I remember hearing something about that at the time, cause.
We did, we do have illumination along the trails, but this is illumination along the frontage of fifty-eighth. So that portion wasn't captured. So illumination along the trailways as you're entering into the parkway, that was a part of the original scope. But now we're talking about the frontage, the sidewalk, the planter strip along fifty-eighth.
So, yeah, this, and I just shared the same map we're looking at. So this area that you can see, uh, two thirty-fourth and fifty-eighth, it's highlighted all the areas that would be designed. So this includes these crosswalks as well as, like Donnie was mentioning, um, ADA crossings and then this sidewalk with, and it has to be town center design standards, so we have to put new lighting in, uh, new sidewalk strip, new sidewalk that's a lot wider than what's there. And the sidewalk that's there is, I don't even know how old, pretty old probably. So, no, this was not captured as part of the original project because we did not know we were gonna have to do this extensive of frontage improvements when we first started, um, the conceptualization of the project. Uh, when we first started it a couple of years ago, the thoughts of the, the funding of it and what would go into it, we thought we were gonna have to do a couple of curb ramps and maybe some crossings, but we didn't know we'd need to do a full overlay or, or half the street overlay. So this is, definitely exceeds the, what we thought. But this is more in line with what our current design standards are. And so this is all covered with our current grant money, so there's no extra funds.
With that thirty-five thousand?
Right. With the, the two million from the transportation, um, federal transportation dollars and then Sound Transit's two million plus their five hundred thousand. That's it. Those three funding sources now. And plus, we're also gonna try to apply for that TAP funding that we mentioned.
And so with that, um, I'm thinking thirty-five thousand dollars. So for all that other stuff, I see a whole lot more money. Will that be covered within any of those grants or are you talking about that new grant that you wanna?
We think that everything we're showing you, including the plaza, the artwork, all of the trails and lighting and this new frontage piece is all gonna be covered by our existing grants, but we need to continue to do some analysis and refine those dollar amounts. We just got some newer numbers that we hope to look at and work with the consultant on and then we'll know where we sit and whether we should apply for that TAP funding that we mentioned. But it, it's within the scope and the, the realm of the contingency that we had set upon originally for the project, which was at the beginning probably like a thirty percent amount that we're kind of dwindling down on as further we get into design work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Just because I am geographically challenged, I'm pretty sure I'm looking at the section you're talking about right now, right? So where it says two thirty-fourth and fifty-eighth, so that top right corner from my view, that's where our seniors assisted living is right now as well?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, well, that excites me to know that we are doing a lot more, cause I would expect that'll be a draw for them to come to the park. So that's, that's exciting. Expensive to, to Councilmember Salmore's point, but exciting to know, well, it's gonna go to good use at least, cause there's a built-in community right there.
Right, and we, we plan to do in front of the rest of the frontage of the park. Um, once we get funding to do the, the upper area of Veterans Memorial Park, then we would finish the frontage improvements all the way along the side of the park. And then to complete it all the way up to City Hall, to do in front of the library would be something that we'd have to come up with separately as well on city property.
Okay, now, Councilmember, I'm, Mayor for ten while.
Thank you, Anna Mayor. Yeah, and just to clarify, this is part of our consent calendar for Monday night.
This one and the ones before. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, so who's doing the next one, which is the review of the RH two word, order three for contract, contract administration and development review support?
I see somebody on the.
Oh, up there.
Rich, we can't hear you.
You, you need to unmute yourself. It might be his microphone.
Rich, you need to unmute yourself, please.
He doesn't have a microphone. He's got bigger problems.
Oh, he just went on mute again. I just saw the red button. There you come on, came on.
Oh, boy. You, if, if you have a, um, telephone, you can call in for your audio.
Double muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, good. All right, yes, I wanted to, uh, present the, uh, this work order three for, um, some additional resources in our engineering department. The, uh, uh, contract, we have a current contract with RH two with a, um, uh, maximum amount of two million dollars. Uh, we are, um, uh, well under that at this point. Uh, what we've, where we're at right now is, uh, we've got, um, four vacancies, uh, out of seven positions and, uh, we're actually filling one of them. Uh, we had a, uh, an acceptance offer today, so it'll be three vacancies in, uh, uh, out of the seven positions. But we, uh, we have some critical needs to keep up with the, uh, the current, uh, projects that we have planned and the programs that we have planned and to restart some of the, uh, programs that we haven't been able to do for the last couple of years. So this contract, uh, is to fund a consultant or two people from a consultant to help, uh, provide us with some expertise to keep us going until we can get the positions filled. Uh, one person's been, uh, helping us with development review for the past year so that we could stay on top of the permits that are coming in as the development, developers are, are gearing up. And then the other one is to help us with contract administration. Uh, we've been without a, uh, grants and contract administrator since last, uh, September and, uh, hopefully this new person that we're hiring can help us, uh, fill that void, but there's still gonna need to be, uh, uh, some, uh, period of time to help get them trained to be able to get up to speed. So, uh, these, these numbers that we're, um, uh, proposing should get us, uh, some, uh, consultant help through the end of the year, um, uh, a max of about three days a week.
Okay, so, uh, is this information only on the consent calendar? All right. So this will be on the consent calendar on Monday. We're getting along there. We're getting help. Uh, let's see, next is the, we are going to the next, right? Uh, next is the review of the twenty twenty-two fourth quarter financial report.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you. Did we have questions?
No, we're all good.
Yep. We're, we're just so happy that things are happening.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers. Janelle Lewis, Finance Director. Today I'll be going over the fourth quarter twenty twenty-two financial report. Um, I just wanna make a note that all of the, so there's only one thing missing from here and that's the impact fee interest. I haven't booked that yet, so. Oh, I'm not sharing it. Thank you. Hold on. Sorry about that. So reviewing the city's finances on a regular basis and posting the review on the city's website highlights the city council's goals, which are plan, finance, develop and maintain quality services, infrastructure and amenities. Review city finances regularly to ensure fiscal responsibility and develop and implement plans to ensure long-term funding and maintenance of public infrastructure. Tonight's review looks at several of the city's funds in terms of their performance during the year twenty twenty-two. The funds are general fund, street operating fund, recreation fund, enterprise fund, which consists of three water, wastewater and stormwater utility funds. Then the capital funds, which is real estate excise tax fund and the street construction The general fund revenues are used to pay for the following programs, which is city council, city manager, finance, human resources and information technology, community and economic development, FIRE, which we annexed that, so next year this will go off. Uh, municipal court, both in-house and contracted through Snohomish County and other providers, parks and property management and police. These are the revenues that are in the general fund. There's property tax, general EMS, and again, those will, the EMS portion will go away and the general will be reduced in twenty twenty-four. Um, sales tax, legislative backfill, utility gas, garbage, cable, telephone, electric, water, sewer, storm, admission tax, gambling tax, business licenses, permits, engineering fees, animal licenses, liquor excise tax and board profits, marijuana excise tax, criminal justice funds, grants, payments from other governments, PUD privilege tax, emergency medical services, transport, among other, oh, and passports. That program will be starting up hopefully in June. We had somebody start, uh, Monday, so very, very exciting. Um, the sales tax collections through the fourth quarter came in above the forecasted amount. They, the total sales tax collected through the fourth quarter was four million eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which is a hundred and sixty-five percent of the adopted budget for twenty twenty-two. The sales tax revenue was up approximately two hundred and sixty-nine thousand compared to this time in twenty twenty-one. Property tax revenue is six million five hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars or ninety-eight percent of the twenty twenty-two adopted budget. Gambling tax revenues are above the budget projections totaling one point one million or a hundred and ten percent of the adopted budget. Prior to the pandemic, the gambling tax revenues for the fourth quarter averaged about ninety-seven percent of the budget. Development services fees totaled one point nine million or a hundred and two percent of the adopted budget. Fines and forfeitures were thirty-one percent of the adopted budget. This is in line with expectations based on prior years. Here you'll see the operating revenues came in approximately a hundred and forty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars over twenty twenty-one. The increase is broken down by the following categories. Sixty-nine point six thousand is property taxes, two hundred and sixty-nine point eight is sales taxes, three hundred and twenty-two thousand is utility taxes, thirty-eight thousand is gambling taxes, thirty thousand is other taxes, eleven thousand. $11,000 is business and animal licenses. Development service fees came down below budget, which was $890,000, or they were less than last year. $40.5,000 for cable and solid waste franchise fees. $56.6 state shared revenue. And $10.4 transport fees. The general fund net operating expenditures through the fourth quarter. They increased approximately $1.2 million over the fourth quarter from 2021. Oops. Sorry. At the end of the fourth quarter, operating revenues for 2022 totaled 111% of the budget, and operating expenditures totaled 140% of the budget. Operating revenue exceeded operating expenditures by $1.7 million. The ending fund balance at the end of fourth quarter of 2022 totaled $9.6 million. The street fund covers the maintenance of the city's public right-of-ways, more than 60 miles of city streets, 500 city-owned streetlights, 15 signalized intersections, 3,300 signs, 70 miles of sidewalk, numerous crosswalks and other pavement markings, vegetation maintenance for more than 20 miles of planning strips, and brush control along unimproved right-of-ways. Street fund operating revenues and expenditures were both at 83% of the 2022 budget as the end of the fourth quarter. The general fund transferred $500,000, or 100% of the 2022 operating transfers that was budgeted, to the street fund for the fourth quarter. The recreation fund covers the revenue and expenditures of the city's rec services, including aquatics, athletics, fitness, youth, and general recreation programs. Overall, the recreation fund has covered 67% of its costs through the fourth quarter. Youth program revenues, they were at 103% of adopted budget. Aquatics revenues totaled $1.4 million, or 90% of the adopted budget. The enterprise utility funds, these are funds with revenues from user rates and fees. Like a business enterprise, these funds cover their own costs without help from outside funds. By and large, under Washington law, these revenues cannot be used to subsidize programs other than those related to the utility. The city operates three utilities, stormwater, sewer, and water. Rates in each utility are made up of three components. The first portion covers maintaining and operations. A second portion pays debt on funds previously borrowed to make repairs and upgrades. And the last portion of rates goes towards replacing and upgrading the system. The stormwater utility fund covers the cost of maintaining the natural and developed storm and surface water conveyance system. These actions come about under regulatory requirements through the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, Phase II permit issued by the Washington State Department of Ecology. The work includes public education and outreach, inspection of commercial and multifamily housing sites for proper operation and maintenance of stormwater treatment and control facilities, identification of illicit discharges to the water system, spill cleanup response for accidental discharges, and water quality monitoring for Lake Ballenger. Stormwater operating revenues totaled $4.7 million. In the picture there is the Vactra truck. Or 107% of the adopted 22 budget through the end of the fourth quarter. Stormwater operating expenses, including debt, totaled 85% of the adopted budget at the end of the fourth quarter. Operating revenues exceeded operating expenses by $1.89 million. These funds will be used to fund future stormwater capital projects and debt service. The ending fund balance of $2.96 million includes $340,000 in operating reserves, $557,443 reserved for debt service, and $2 million designated reserved for capital projects. These are the operating revenue and expenditures through the fourth quarter by year. So you can see that revenue stayed in line and expenditures went up a little bit. The sewer utility fund covers the expense of providing sanitary sewer services to the community, 66 miles of mains, 30 miles of laterals, four lift stations, and 1,400 manholes. The majority of sewer treatment services are provided by the wastewater treatment plant in Edmonds, of which Mount Lake Terrace is part owner. Smaller amounts of wastewater flows to King County Metro via Briar and Shoreline. The sewer utility fund is also the funding source for capital improvements to the city's wastewater collection system, and for the city's share of the cost of capital improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. The revenues, the sewer service revenues are at 100% of the adopted 22 budget as the end of the fourth quarter. The expenditures total 71% of the adopted budget at the end of the fourth quarter. Operating revenues exceeded operating expenditures by $2.8 million. These funds will be used to fund future stormwater capital projects and debt service. And a picture of the sewer utility funds, operating revenues and expenditures through the fourth quarter for 2018 to 2022. You can see the revenues went up, expenditures went down. The water utility fund covers the expense of providing potable water to the community. 90 miles of water mains, three water reservoirs, 900 hydrants, 2,700 system valves, 6,000 service connections, cross connection and backflow prevention program, sampling of the water to ensure all standards are met, and capital improvements and replacements. Total water operating revenues are 103% of the adopted 22 budget at the end of the fourth quarter, and operating expenses are at 79% of the adopted 22 budget at the end of the fourth quarter. Operating revenues exceeded operating expenses by $2.8 million. These funds will be used to fund future water capital projects and debt service payments. Ending fund balance is $8.3 million. And again, the operating revenues and expenditures for water through the fourth quarter. You can see they were almost identical for revenues and expenditures. The real estate excise tax revenues through the fourth quarter, they went down a little bit for 2022. The street construction fund covers projects to provide, preserve, and improve street, pedestrian, bicycle, and traffic control facilities, a portion of the city's allocation of the motor vehicle fuel tax, traffic impact fees, interest that accrues on funds in the account, state and federal grants and appropriations, loan proceeds, inter-agency financial participation, REIT, TBD license fees, which is a restricted revenue. Because so much of these funds are restricted by law to be used only for street construction and not street maintenance, they are kept in this separate fund than the street operating fund. The capital projects supported by the fund are those identified in the Transportation Capital Facilities Improvement Program, TC-FIP, and the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP. Street pavement overlays, seal coats, sidewalk and sidewalk ramp construction, bicycle route signing, and striping, street reconstruction, and traffic control system upgrades. You can see a couple of our employees repairing the streets. In conclusion, the city's fourth quarter finances highlight three things. The majority of the city programs remain on target financially in providing cost-effective services, programs, and projects identified by the Mount Lake Terrace community. The city council has adhered to a policy of ensuring these programs and projects will be able to be maintained for years to come through living within our means. The financial impacts of the pandemic are starting to smooth out, but we'll continue to monitor and update council as necessary. Any questions?
Councilmember Sonmore?
I just have a curiosity question. So when checks aren't cashed, and what does the city do with that? So they send it to the state for, so other people have to claim the information if they haven't found a check?
Oh, you mean if there's unclaimed checks? Yeah, that will, that's supposed to go to the state once a year.
Oh, but you don't contact that person prior to it?
We do, definitely. Yeah, we try and reach out to the individuals that are, or the customers, or companies, or whoever's on there, and try and get them...
Good to know, thank you.
To cash their checks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Woodard?
Comment, thank you, Mayor. Comment, question, comment. The first comment is amazing. We're four square miles, but what actually makes the place go?
Right?
It's like, how are there that many miles of, under the ground? Anyway, I just thought that was amazing. 90 square miles of sewer lines and water lines. Anyway, that was the comment. Question, we switched the animal licensing process at this point about three, maybe four years ago. Went to a new system. Are we seeing any traction? I know that's before your time, but at the same time, maybe you were noticing that column looks a little different than years past? And I'm just curious in terms of, we created a pathway. I think we're paying decent money for it, but if it's not having the return, then we need to probably figure out how do we get a better return on that? And as a pet owner, I will say I can name at least one family that's probably not very responsible. So I'm just saying, you know, probably more families out there are the same way.
Yeah, I can look into that.
The right thing to do. So just curious about that one.
Well, this year I finally got, I finally got in the mail that I needed to renew my pets' licenses. And even though I was in the know, I'm in all these meetings. I brought everything over to the, over to the police department, and they told me I have to do it online.
Yes, online, yeah. Which again, should be easier, but I'm curious to see if it's taken traction. And then there's a comment, just thank you for your work. And really, I really want to say thank you for living up to the hype. You know, you were really, really well touted, and your reputation preceded you, and you have walked into it and expanded it.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you for the work you've been doing, and your team, and advocating for the city.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I want to echo that. I mean, first of all, thank you. You've done an amazing job bringing it all together. We recognize there were some challenges created over the last few years, and you've been doing a great job putting it, putting the pieces all back together again. So thank you. First of all, or second of all, I guess, and while the ending fund balance is looking good for this year, and that's great news, I would like to get a, do we have an updated six-year forecast?
Yeah, I was gonna, yes, I'm working on updating that to reflect the 2022 and then 2023.
Yeah, that'd be great. So look forward to seeing that, because I know there were some potential challenges. And then, of course, now that we've annexed into the South County Fire, that should change a lot of things. So I guess, I'm looking forward to seeing the six-year forecast based on all this information and the fact that we've done the annexation, so that changes a lot of dynamics for us. But six years from now, we need to make sure that we're continuing to be in the black. And that is, that was a concern based on the last budget that we had. I mean, we, it was, we passed a good budget, but we need to be very cautious, and especially when we start looking at the salary schedule and some of those issues. And we've got to pay to retain a great, the great workforce and be able to attract the talent and fill some of those positions that are still unfilled. And to do that is going to cost us money. And so that's, we're going to need to reconcile all of these different pieces. So anyway, looking forward to getting that new piece of information as soon as we can. Calling out a, I know we've got some concerns about some of the capital funds and enterprise funds that we're going to need to deal with, and some challenges ahead. We're going to need to figure out what, what, where we are. And I just want to remind folks that that is coming, and we're going to be looking at that in the next, what, couple of months? Is that?
Yeah, and I'm hoping at the 2020, when I do present for the 2023 first quarter, I'll, I'm hoping to have the financial forecast with that.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah. So thank you. And so that is going to be another challenge that we're going to have to figure out, and related to that is the capital improvement fund and capital projects. And so I think it's going to be worth having a few work sessions focused on that, once we get some of this other information in place and understanding where we're at with the enterprise funds, where we're at with the six-year forecast. Really sitting down and trying to figure out our capital projects and making sure that we're funding everything that needs to be funded, and figuring out where the shortfalls are, because we've got big dreams, and we've got a lot of great things that we want to be doing here. And we may or may not have all the money that we need to do that, and so we're going to need to figure out how are we going to fill those gaps? And are there, first of all, grants, obviously, and potential opportunities we need to be looking at, and taking to the state and the feds, and trying to attract more money, as we've done a great job of being able to do that, but we're going to need to continue to do that. But there's also some other potential opportunities. I think we need to look at, you know, the state has created a lot of different special districts that we might need to want to consider. So anyway, I think just putting that on radar, I think for some future work sessions, we're going to want to spend some time looking at some of those, some of those different possibilities and opportunities and challenges that we're going to be facing ahead. Then another note, real quick, the Housing Needs Fund has been sitting there with $280,000 in it. So I think that's, let's, let's take a look at what we originally, and we haven't been doing much with it, right?
Yeah.
That's another one that maybe we should have a work session on and talk about what the original plan was there, what we want to do with it, or reconsider what, where we're going, and how we want to utilize those funds.
Okay.
And that concludes my thoughts for now. But again, thank you. Looking forward to continuing to make great progress.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I had a question on the REIT.
Yes.
Did we have a huge apartment building sell in 2021, which is why it was much higher than the others?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's something, that doesn't happen every year, so we really shouldn't count that and expect us to be up there all the time comparing year to year to year.
Yeah, that's, I should have made a note, I was like, wait, why is it so, you know, so much less? And then, yeah, I remember there was a huge, yeah.
Yeah. Whatever it's called today. What's the latest?
Yeah, you can see right here, it was $2.5 million in 2021, and the years prior, it wasn't that big, and it went back to normal.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Normal in 2022.
I will take advantage of this opportunity to remind us that the reason the real estate excise tax is in the capital dollars is for exactly reasons like that. Because, you know, we can plan for X amount of dollars, we can pretty much count on year in, year out, that we're going to get in real estate excise tax. But when we do have these big, fantastic, you know, sales that provided a lot of additional revenues, those are one-time revenues. So we're going to use those for one-time projects, capital projects. So on that note, as a reminder, for AWC, who wants to utilize real estate excise taxes for maintenance, we need to be very cautious about how we might proceed in allowing and authorizing that at the state level. And I would encourage us strongly, regardless of what they do at the state level, to make sure that we maintain utilizing real estate. sure that we maintain utilizing real estate excise taxes for capital purposes.
Yeah, it just makes life so much easier when you do that.
You don't know his past life really fought for that, and I was part of it, too.
We know the real estate excise tax very well.
Yes, inside out.
Me, too.
Okay, any, any other questions? All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is the review of the ordinance to amend salary schedule.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, and members of the community. Council has been discussing for quite some time and budgeted for this year a review of the salary schedule for the nonrepresented members of the city. However, we wanted to present this particular item as a one, kind of a one-off thing, because as you know, our assistant city manager, Stephen Clifton, retired, and with myself knew my position, we needed to have someone in the, in the deputy city manager's office with experience and with the ability to help the council and myself move the city forward. So after looking at various comparables around the community, around the Puget Sound, we have prepared an ordinance for you to adjust the salary schedule to 172 to 190. And I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Anyone with questions? I don't see anyone up there. I don't see anyone here.
Okay.
That was a fast, easy one.
Nice and easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We have no one in the audience to comment, and the one person online, if you'd like to comment, please use your hand raise tool. Going once, going twice. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. The review of the May 15 agenda, has everyone looked at it? And it's almost all ordinances. Yes, Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question to city manager. Do you have someone to read for all the proclamations at this point?
Thank you, we do. I have asked several council members, I actually talked to Councilmember Ryan, who has graciously agreed to read two, but if he would share one of those, the PDM memorial with Mayor Protem wall, that would be terrific. That way, everybody has the, the opportunity to read one of the proclamations to honor groups in the city.
Go ahead, Councilmember Solmore.
It is also Mental Health Awareness Month. Is it possible to get a proclamation for that as well? It's just...
I'm sure we can, and we can have one of the council members read it if you'd like to, or we can, we can put it in front of somebody on the dais, and they can read it. But we can make that happen, sure.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan. Oops, turn it on.
Oopsie doops. I, I see on May 15 also, we have photos at 6 o'clock.
Yes, we have to be here early.
It says 6 o'clock. So hour early, heavy suit on, gentleman.
Be dressed up. Be dressed professionally. All right. Next is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you. Two separate comments. This first one, I'm going to maybe queue up for Mayor Protem, because it's a continuation of something he started, which is, I had the opportunity this week, feels like that was this week, to attend Arlington's State of the City and meet their mayor, Mayor Tolbert, awesome person, human being. But where I'm going with that is, she had mentioned that she had a conversation with our Mayor Protem around the idea of how you develop a, basically a city center, which is what Arlington had to do. It's now very thriving. And so I'll leave that part alone, but I will say that she left it with, because they were filming the State of the City, and she pointed out, the company that's filming this right now is the same one that helped us develop our downtown center. And she was clear that we got thousands of views that we definitely would not have. So I took the opportunity to meet that person, and I want to pass the card on to our city manager, to the CED team, if they want to pursue that, or I'm sure you will have a conversation at some point, but at least you'll now have some information on how to get to those resources that Arlington used. All right, so that's the end of that comment, unless the Mayor Protem wanted to add anything. I can wait for my second one.
Well, since you provided that opening, thank you. Yes, and in fact, city manager and I just had that conversation a couple days ago about that very thing. But yeah, Mayor Tolbert has shared, well, I won't go into the details, but yes, obviously, you know, I've been very anxious and interested in expanding our economic development efforts and opportunities and attracting investors to our area to fully embrace the vision that we created in our town center plan. And that has, you know, we're seeing a, a lot of development occurring in Shoreline and in Linwood, and we need to remind potential investors that we have some great opportunities right here in Mount Lake Terrace as well. So yes, and Mayor Tolbert graciously offered some contacts that they've utilized, so I appreciate that, and I have had that conversation with our city manager, and do look forward to following up on that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, separate topic. Earlier today, the mayor and I had an opportunity to go to the Nile for the event that they have going on. It's a beautiful space, and I had been there before, and I will just say, I didn't realize you had all this potential, and they've activated it. That said, that was just a context of how this came about. At the end of the night, I ended up standing next to, didn't realize it, to some gentlemen from the American Legion, who graciously invited me personally to come and speak, but I think they meant council. And I told them, well, I would ask the council if they could join me, and they were said, please do, more the merrier. So I've already put it on the city manager's radar, and hopefully that will work, but I want to extend that to the rest of the council as well, if you're interested. And I, I think really they want, well, I know what they want to do is be more engaged in the community, and they want to know how they can support us. Their words were, they recognize we're their leadership, and if they support the leadership, we all win. So I don't think I'm paraphrasing them wrong in that sense, and just kind of laying that out there, that I will attend, but extending it to anyone else that wants to, and I can pass the date along through the city manager, through his report that way, so we don't have to play phone tag and all that and mess around. But just be aware that the American Legion is interested in having a conversation with us.
Thank you.
I was just going to do some follow-up on the American Legion. I just rented it a few months ago, and it's a great opportunity, and it's a good rental space for, compared to a lot of the other rentals, and I hope that we can keep them in the city, so.
All right. Did you have your hand up, Rick?
No.
Okay. Did you have anything more to add? All right, so anything, Councilmember Murray? Nope. Okay. Well, I just wanted to just mention two things, several things. Well, I already mentioned the animal license. And and then I also wanted to mention that on the cottage projects in Mount Lake Terrace, they're all sold now. All, both, both projects are all sold and gone. And I'd love to see more of those being built in the future, but we don't have very much land. I went and spoke at the Mount Lake Terrace Plaza the other day, and I'm going to talk more about it later. But what I did want to mention is, one of the main things that they, they were asking is, they don't see, especially on 50, 58th here, a lot of traffic signs, like how, what's, what is the speed limit here? You know, apparently there are no traffic signs, and people are speeding up and down this street. And you live on the same street, so you probably know that, too. So I, I thought, wow, traffic signs won't cost a lot of money, hopefully. And that's one thing that we can provide, but then somebody on another street might hear this. So we better probably just kind of put traffic signs here and there, because if, if there are none on 58th, I think there's a couple on 48th, and there's, must be a few on 44th, but we have more streets than just that, so maybe we can just kind of add a few traffic signs here and there. And then, what is the speed limit in Mount Lake Terrace? Does anyone know? Uh huh. But I found that out the first time I got a ticket, when, when the policeman asked me, do you know what the speed limit is? So anyways, so that will be an easy fix, I hope, and we can work on that. And that's the end for me. Anyone else? Because, go ahead.
Since you brought up the, the streets, and I'm hoping that we could talk about it at the retreat, but we need to look at all the intersections in the roads for their classification, the A scene, because with the 500 apartments that are going up at Light Rail and the 301 or 321 that are going up in Rogers' old place and, and potential more, I think we might have some failure rates, because we've always banked on putting in another road over here. And so I think it's really important, because every time I talk to somebody about building more houses here, the failure rate of roads always comes into play. And if you go down 56 and you get behind a school bus, you're backed up for almost, you know, six, eight blocks sometimes, so maybe we can discuss that and then put up the signs as well.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. If that's, no one else has anything, we're going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.